Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to a special town meeting for August 4th, 2021. I'm Eugene Cushman. I'm the town meeting moderator. I'm going to ask that may all of you make sure you have your phones turned off, please? And can you hear me out in the lobby? Can I be heard out in the lobby?
They're only taped away, so I'm going to turn that TV up and you'll be able to hear me.
No, they can't hear.
Yeah, because you're going to be about 20 seconds behind.
We get it's okay now?
It's like a five-second lag, so just hear it.
You've got to close the door so these people can hear what we mean.
And there are, anyone that wants a mask, there are masks available at the back of the room. They're obviously voluntary at this point. Joe, if someone in the lobby wants to talk, they have to be able to let me know.
Yeah, I'll take care of that. Just like a five-second lag.
Okay. Madam Town Clerk, if you could read the call, please. Oh, excuse me. Before that, Mr. Dale, could you do the pledge?
My pledge, ladies and gentlemen, is to abide by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Now, Madam Town Clerk, if you could read the call, please.
Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the town of Eastlime to be held on August 4th, 2021, at 7:00 PM at the Eastlime Town Hall Upper Meeting Room for the following purposes. One, to receive communications from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance with respect to a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Town of Eastlime, Connecticut Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of an Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement and Schedules There Too for the Acquisition, Purchase, Financing, and Leasing of Certain Equipment." Two, to consider and act upon a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Town of Eastlime, Connecticut Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of an Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement and Schedules There Too for the Acquisition, Purchase, Financing, and Leasing of Certain Equipment." Three, to consider and act upon a special appropriation of up to $20,000 from CNRE Account 32-99-094-900-001, Eastlime High School Pool Roof Reserve for a roof damage investigation at the Eastlime Schools Aquatic Center. Original Board of Education authorization amount is $17,010. Additional Board of Education approval would be needed prior to spending the remaining $2,990. Four, to consider and act upon a transfer in the amount of $175,446 to CNRE Fund 32, Account 32-70-300-500-999, Townwide Projects. The source of funds is General Fund Account 01-01-120-200-500, contingency, the remaining balance of FEMA funds. Five, to consider and act upon a special appropriation in the amount of $200,000 for the planning, design, acquisition, construction, equipment, equipping, and furnishing of the public safety building to specifically include roof replacement. The source of funds being American Rescue Plan funding. Six, to transact any other business proper to come before the meeting. Copy of the proposed resolution is on file and opened to public inspection at the office of the town clerk. It was dated at Eastlime, Connecticut, the 29th day of July, 2021, signed by the Board of Selectmen, advertised in the day paper, recorded in the town clerk's office, and posted on the signpost.
Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. As usual, we'll go over the ground rules for a town, special town meeting. Under Connecticut General Statute 7-6, you must be an elector of the town or 18 years of age, a U.S. citizen, and own property in a value of $1,000 or greater on the grand list of 10, 1, 20. Under Connecticut General Statute 9-360, any person who votes but is not eligible to vote will be subject to a fine of not less than $300, no more than $500, imprisoned not less than one year, no more than two years, disenfranchised, or all of the above. Now, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand at the appropriate time. Come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. If you are not eligible to vote, make that fact known before you address the meeting. Please do not conduct dialogues amongst yourselves. Address all questions through the moderator. You may approve any expenditure, you may disapprove any expenditure, you may reduce an expenditure, but you may not increase any expenditure in a resolution. I appoint the registrars as tellers and checkers if we need them, and I don't see the registrars. Are they here? Do we have registrars?
We have them.
Oh, okay. We'll take up the items in the order that they appear on the call. The first item is to receive communication. Madam Town Clerk, please make note for the record that we have received the communication. Okay. I will entertain a motion on item number two, to consider and act upon a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Town of Eastlime, Connecticut Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement and Schedules There Too for the Acquisition, Purchase, Finance, and Leasing of Certain Equipment." Do I hear a resolution?
Don't move.
Mr. Siri, is there a second?
Second.
I did not see who that was. Sorry, with a mask, I don't know. Did you get that? Okay. Okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. First Election.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Thank you, citizens, for coming out tonight. This is a very simple requisition here. We, this is, this happens every year. We have a capital plan, and then we need to fund the capital plan. And we're going about that tonight as published. And as you might know, we're purchasing a number of items, and I have different department heads here to answer any specific questions you may have. For the Public Works Department, an autoloader, it's a 12-year-old vehicle we are replacing, as well as a dump truck that's 10 years old. There are two police vehicles we're adding to replace seven-year-old vehicles. Parks and Rec has a pickup truck with a lift gate, including a snowplow package. They do the work of all our parking lots in the wintertime. And that vehicle is 10 years old, and the water utilities operation, of course, the water and sewer utility pays the town back through the ratepayers, but they're replacing a 10-year-old Ford F-350. There are a number of Board of Ed items, including interactive boards and laptops and access points for Internet access. And I know Mr. Newton is here, and other members of the Board of Ed can answer any specific questions you may have. That's what we're voting on tonight. The whole package is $1,241,000.
Thank you, Mr. First Election. Would anyone else like to be heard on this item? Seeing no hands, Joe, can you check outside, sit down?
Anyone have any questions? You're good.
Seeing no further hands, then we remove the question. All in favor of a resolution of the Town of Eastlime, Connecticut authorizing the execution and delivery of equipment lease purchase agreement and schedules there too for the acquisition, purchase, financing, and leasing of certain equipment? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay. The ayes have it, the resolution carries. Item number three on the agenda is to consider and act upon a special appropriation of up to $20,000 from CNRE Account 32-99-094-900-001, Eastlime High School Pool Roof Reserve for a roof damage investigation at the Eastlime Schools Aquatic Center. Original Board of Education authorization amount of $17,010. Additional Board of Education approval would be needed prior to spending the remaining $2,990. Do I hear a resolution?
Don't move.
Mr. Siri, there is a second?
Senator.
Yes, sir. Is there any discussion?
So, has the votes come up?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Newton, Superintendent of Schools. Just for our public, a few pieces of additional information. Our pool is now 22 years old, and we have found a lot of corrosion in the pylons of the roof. Chunks are falling down into the pool, falling on community members as they're swimming. So, we are requesting this money out of the account that we have set aside here in the town from the settlement, the roof settlement that occurred years, 22 years ago. And up to $20,000 in order to study that structural concern that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. Would anyone else like to be heard on this issue? Joe, can you check out there, please?
Do you want to have any comments?
I see a hand back there. Mr. Schultz, go ahead, Mr. Schultz.
They're all set. But they want to be able to vote too, so.
Yes.
Make sure we...
Mike Schultz, Lovers Lane, Eastlime. I don't have a problem with the swimming pool roof being replaced. The question I have is why are we always doing studies? Why can't we just get three known contractors that are familiar with this work, have them come in, take a look at it, give us a bid, and then let our building committee select who can do this job? To me, that's like $20,000 we're spending for no reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no hands, then remove the question. To consider and act upon a special appropriation of $20,000 from CNRE Account 32-99-094-900-001, Eastlime High School Pool Roof Reserve for a roof damage investigation at the Eastlime Schools Aquatic Center. Original Board of Education authorization of $17,010. Additional Board of Education approval would be needed prior to spending the remaining $2,990. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
We have one nay.
Three nays on the pool?
No nays. We have one nay. The resolution carries. The next item to consider is an act upon the transfer of the amount of $175,446 to CNRE Fund 32, Account 32-70-300-500-999, Townwide Projects. The source of funding is General Fund Account 01-01-120-200-500, contingency, the remaining balance of FEMA funds. Do I hear a resolution?
Don't move.
Mr. Siri, is there a second?
Second.
I didn't see who that was. Yes, Bob Brigham? Is there any discussion? Mr. First Election.
Thank you.
Thank you for everyone's patience tonight, too. And, you know, we're crowded in a room, we have this going on outside. Thank you, Joe, for relaying the votes. We're still a little town, aren't we? We contemplated bringing this to the auditorium, and we weren't sure. And they're just getting over a theater group weekend, so we just wanted to keep it simple. And knowing that we had the satellite opportunity out in the lobby, we thought that would work. As we remember, FEMA sent us a claim money for Irene and Sandy. It was a significant amount of money. We used a big portion on the public safety building, as you remember. We also bought police body cameras with it. We put the remaining amount in contingency in our operating budget. But what happens at the end of the year is that money gets transferred, any money left over that we don't spend. And by the way, as we get to the end of a fiscal year, we don't go running around on shopping sprees. We don't go to Staples and go buy a bunch of staplers and paper clips. We try to save our money, and that money goes to our undesignedated fund balance, our rainy day account. We're going to be giving a significant amount of money back to the rainy day account, building that up. That helps with our bond ratings, that helps with the solid financial backing of the town. I'd rather not see, we, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, agreed, we'd rather not see this remaining balance slip into the rainy day account instead this FEMA money because it is, you know, it's government money, it was a grant, well, it was a claim that came back to us for all the damage from Irene and Sandy. We'd like to put it in a CNRE account, which means it doesn't slip into the rainy day account. It will be there to be used as town projects come up. And these are the kind of things we do, we call it, they're like savings buckets, and we do that for our town roofs and HVAC systems, and we put money away in savings buckets so that at the end of the year, it doesn't slip into the rainy day account, it's there when we need it to be there. And that's what we're doing with the FEMA account. I hope that is a nice, common way of explaining what we're doing here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. First Election. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir. Come to the podium, please. Give your name and address.
My name is Bruce Gassinger, and I live at 12 Stone Cliff Drive in Miami, Connecticut. I'm just asking, on the last subject, the last item, will those items that are purchased out of this fund be voted on by the public, or will they just be purchased?
Would anyone like to answer that question, Mr. First Election?
Absolutely. You can stay there if there's a follow-up. I think I can answer it pretty quickly. All appropriations will go in front of Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, and most times it will come to a town meeting as well. So, they don't just get spent. There's no such thing as that in our town government. We always bring through appropriations, through this process. Okay?
Thank you. It's quiet. Thank you, Mr. First Election. Thank you, Mr. Jessica. Would anyone else like to be heard? Joe, can you check and see if anyone wants to be heard on this issue? No. All right. Then remove the question. All those in favor of considering a transfer account of $175,446 to CNRE Fund 32, Account 32-70-300-500-999, Townwide Projects. The source of funding is General Fund Account 01-01-120-200-500, contingency, the remaining balance of the FEMA funds. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay. The ayes have it, unless there's noise out there.
Any nays? No nays up there?
No nays. The resolution passes. The next item on the agenda is to consider and act upon a special appropriation of the amount of $200,000 for the planning, design, acquisition, construction, equipping, and furnishing the public safety building to specifically include roof replacement. The source of funding being the American Rescue Plan funding. Is there a resolution?
Don't move.
Mr. Siri, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Centauri? Okay. Would anyone like to be heard? Mr. First Election? Is there a problem, Joe?
Let's make sure there's no problem.
Yeah, you got a problem. When you do the votes, you wait like 10 seconds because they haven't heard the rest of the thing, and we're voting, and I go out and ask the votes while they're still listening to the conversation.
I got you.
Good.
So, if you can wait before the vote, just wait until they clear so that they know what they're voting for?
It's about, it's about 20 seconds or so. Before we start, Mike Mines, will you just raise your hand and do that? Mike Mines is a volunteer in our town. All this AV stuff, all this technical stuff, Mike steps up and helps this town with all this new equipment, and this equipment isn't working perfectly yet because we're not in the new public safety building. We'll all be tied in, but we'll be on HD, and thank you, Mike, for your service to the town. You're a whiz, and we call on you often, maybe too often. Thank you for that. You know, we have a lot of unsung heroes in this town. Mike is among them. This is a clear and concise report, request. In order to deliver a finished product to this town, the Town Building Committee, who's been working very hard on this project, has determined that a new roof should be installed on the building rather than patching the roof that is there now. That was the plan. The roof that was certified by the project's architect is having three to five years left, and quite possibly 10 years with proper maintenance, has not lived up to that promise. That represented somewhere between 15% and 25% of the life of a roof, and it wasn't there. Roofs deteriorate quickly when workers are on them putting in new HVAC systems, installing elevator shafts, patches, flashing, et cetera, and that happened here. The roof is, this roof is not a surprise. We knew we needed a new roof in a couple of years, and that was the plan. The Vision Committee, that made up, was made up of 12 citizens, both elected and appointed, had some very healthy, and I might say heated, discussions about the roof, the elevator, and various other details. In the end, the committee unanimously approved the forwarded project, and forwarded the project as is, saving the replacement of the roof for another day. Both the Boards of Selectmen and Finance unanimously approved this plan from the Board of, from the Vision Committee, including not having the roof as part of the project. The town approved this project twice at referendum. As discussed, delivering this building with the new roof is the right thing to do. I believe that was a unanimous vote by the Town Building Committee. Using American Rescue Funds to do this work will add no extra burden or debt to our taxpayers. It would be a shame if people come up here and try to politicize this project. Again, there's no town election, there is a town election coming up in November, and the time for politics is at another time. Let's make this about looking forward, finally coming together for the solution to a decades-old problem that has plagued this town. Was the project a perfect solution? No. I like the school building project. We didn't have funding upfront for a design team or preliminary architecture or engineering inspections. On the heels of a $37 million school renovation project and two failed police station attempts in the past, one that had a proposed cost of double this project, this is the project that made sense, and it still does. The project is 95% done according to the Town Building Committee. This building will become our police dispatch emergency operations center and fire marshal's office in just a few months. Other town departments will fill up the remaining 12,000 square feet of space in the coming years as the needs of our town grows. This project solves the problem today and the future problems, space issues in the future. We can bicker back and forth all night on the project. We have for years. But the bottom line, we have an outstanding facility. We're on the cusp of moving in, and the building's roof, being updated now and using federal funds, is the right thing to do, and we could blessedly move on from this 30-year discussion.
May I ask, Mr. First Election? Would anyone else like to be heard?
Good evening. I'm sure it will come as no surprise.
Name and address, please, written?
Oh, 6 Overbrook Road. Roseanne Hardy. I'm sure it will come as no surprise to many of you in the audience that this is going to be a short history lesson. So, I have been part of the discussion, perhaps problems, but studies, since 1984 when I first was elected to the Board of Selectmen. Every single administration has grappled with this problem since that time, when a police study in 1984 stated that our facilities were inadequate and inappropriate. So, when the move was made to the existing probate building, that was a temporary move. The Old Town Hall, it was too small then. The Dominion Building, temporary, good enough. Not so temporary. I voted against it because I knew temporary wasn't temporary. Several plans have been considered, and as I said, every Board of Selectmen, Administration, Board of Finance has dealt with this issue. Every single plan that has come before, that has come forward, has faced some kind of opposition. Plan, with federal financing and help, to share property on the National Guard camp. Opposition, we shouldn't combine state and federal policing with each other. No success. Another plan, well researched, $12 million. I'm sure in today's figures, it wouldn't be 12 million, it would be closer to 14 or 15. Failed. So, now, here we are, the here and now. Over the years, as I said, we've had extensive discussions. Property locations, where? Is this my favorite site for property? No. But, let's look at the possibilities. Over the past years, we have studied the possibility of 10 different locations. Downtown, would we like to give up Betts Field and turn that into a site for the police station for downtown? Would we like to try eminent domain and take private property? I think New London tried that. Rings End, I'm sorry, not Rings End, the Limber Company at the other, their end of town, yes. They are, we own some landlocked land there, but that comprised of, that was comprised of a lot of wetlands, not advisable. Remember, Gateway was going to give us a lot when they came in for a police station? Never happened. I could go on. The cost of a new property, new building, this board and previous boards have faced tough decisions. A 20-year roof, the controversy? Where was the controversy when Flander School wanted a 20-year roof? There was no outcry over that. Every single building in this town has a 20-year roof, guaranteed. This roof would be guaranteed. So, when you, so, over the course of my career, I have toured 10 different police stations, from Clinton, which is a new, which was a new facility, New London, Groton, and even in Maine, New Hampshire, and Massachusetts. I can assure you that this building will be one that will be talked about. We have space there, we can possibly use it as a training center for, we have meeting rooms, a training center for other police departments to come and pay for training. The big talk now is about regionalization. Here would be an opportunity for officers from other communities to come and join with us and perhaps help with some problem solving. So, all things considered, as I said, would this have been my choice of favorite location? No. But when you consider what was available and what we were going to take for property, what would we have taken? And what would have been the outcry for that? If you think about it, the location, we're not the small town anymore. Many people very frequently drive up to get onto I-95 at the other end of town. It's not the distance that it was in 1960, in 1966. People are frequently out there for parks, for location, for recreation, and I think at this point, to have this project fail over the cost of whether or not we should have a 20-year roof or a 30-year roof is absolute lunacy. I hope you agree with me and that you will vote in favor of the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Madam. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you all for coming. It's really great to see...
If you could give your name and address for the record, please.
Camille Alberti, Seven Darrow's Court. I'm here speaking as a citizen, a taxpayer, as well as the Board of Finance Chair. So, I appreciate that everybody came out this evening. It's great to see so many faces on such an important issue. I'm not here to argue tonight about whether or not we need a new roof for the public safety building. Clearly, we do. We need a new roof. This project has been in the works for five years or more, and what I'm here to do tonight is simply to advocate for a pause on this project of two to three weeks in order for us to get a floor-to-ceiling inspection on this building as well as a couple extra bids. The bid process, as outlined in our purchasing policy, typically requires three bids. The administration and the building committee have represented to us that this is not a separate capital project, that it is just a modification to the project as it exists. So, I would argue that this really is a capital improvement project and one that warrants at least three separate bids. I had taken a tour of the public safety building a couple of weeks ago and noticed that there were mold spores on the bottom of the walls and the rear of this building. When questioned at our last Board of Finance meeting, we were told that, when we questioned the administration, we were... the Administration, we were told that the spores were bleached and painted over. And I, for one, was not entirely comfortable with that explanation because unless the source of the mold is discovered, proper remediation cannot take place. Two other members of our Finance Board had also toured the building prior to our last meeting, and they discovered that a conduit was pointing to the foundation towards the rear of the building. And when we questioned about that conduit, we were told, well, actually, the Administration didn't seem to know anything about that conduit, and an explanation was given that it could possibly be for electrical wiring. So, having no definitive answer as to what was going on, the meeting progressed. I'm here to say tonight that the abject refusals over the past couple of years to get a complete inspection performed on this building by an outside licensed contractor, it leaves me befuddled, to say the least. Refusal to spend a couple thousand dollars on a proper inspection has led to a $30,000 bill for patching and repairing ceiling leaks over the past year. This is an absolute waste of taxpayer money. Now, remember, just last year, the architects had represented to the good people of Eastline that a few hundred dollars of patching and repairs would significantly extend the roof's life by 10 years or more. That $30,000 that we spent in the past year repairing these leaks would have gone a long way toward a complete roof replacement, and now we are being asked to ignore that sum and that waste because we can readily pay for the $171,000 roof out of the American Rescue Funds. Some people in the audience may be wondering why we are being asked to appropriate $200,000 when the single 20-year life roof bid came in at $171,000. And I will tell you, that is because the contingency fund for this project is already $30,000 over budget, and this request will help to make up for that shortfall. I'd like the residents and the taxpayers in this room tonight to understand that voting no for this $200,000 appropriation request does not mean that the roof will not be replaced. Of course, it will be replaced. It means that the Building Committee would simply have to go back, and they would finally be permitted to get a full inspection report and a couple of more bids before proceeding with the roof replacement. Now, I agree with the decision to delay moving $500,000 worth of equipment into a room in this building where there's water coming out of the ceiling. We don't want to waste that investment in equipment. But I also believe it's worthwhile to delay moving our police officers and other safety personnel into this building until after we can be certain that we are not moving them from one mold-infested building into another. I hope that you can see this point this evening, but I trust that we will move forward with how the vote transpires tonight. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Alberti. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir.
I am the clerk of the works of the public safety complex. I want to just correct a few statements that were just made. The black spores that were noticed on the lower wall of the east side of the building were mildew, and it was because the HVAC had been off for four to six weeks while work was being done. It was reactivated a week ago. The lower portion of the wall was treated with a mildew fighting, killing chemical, and there's absolutely none there now. I also believe that the contingency fund is under budget. There are a lot of running totals that are not finite yet, one of which is my salary, which was $50,000, and I'm currently at $37,000 and change, and I will be finishing out at the beginning of September under $40,000, which will leave a $10,000 credit. The idea of getting a full inspection of a roof for a couple of thousand dollars is absolutely insane. I believe the representation that this is not part of a project and should be put out to bid is wrong. The Vision Committee got prices, or we're told that the, a new roof would be $340,000 to $360,000, so we put it aside. There are, and the fact that we're getting a new roof with a 20-year warranty from a reputable contractor and subcontractor with various guarantees and warranties, and we hold money to make sure everything is done correctly and we've corrected problems. So, there's some inaccuracies of what was just said, and I hope this clears some of them up. And I could go on for an hour, but I will not.
Thank you, Mr. Cornelius. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Lisa Picarazzi, 14 Oak Hill Drive. So, I'm a former Vision Committee member. I'm one that did vote for the building. Our choices were to vote for it or not vote for it. I didn't want to see the police stay in the building that we're in, and I'm behind the building now. I mean, I voted for it. I mean, there were some things that I didn't agree with, but my concern in coming out tonight is pretty simple. We just put a roof on our house. It was a 30-year roof. I think if we were building a new building, if you're trying to have a comparison, we would have had a 30-year roof on a new building. So, my only request is, you know, let's not cut corners and let's not rush this. Let's get a 30-year roof on it because we want to get our money's worth on this, and I'm not quite sure what the downside is to three bids. I mean, I just keep thinking about what I would do if I were a homeowner, maybe what you would do. You would want to get the best value that you can for your money, and I know it would cause a slight extension of some amount, I don't know, but the original estimate for a 30-year roof in the first original plan was $362,000 for a 30-year roof, and now we have an estimate of $171,000 for a 20-year roof. And, to be honest, it just feels a little bit off because with all the problems with supply chain now with COVID and all of that, we all know that the price of building materials has gone through the roof, so, no pun intended. So, I would just, just because I think it's the right thing to do, I think we should ask as taxpayers, I think we should ask for a 30-year roof for our money, and I think we should make sure that we're getting the best price for what we're putting on. It's really not any more complicated for me than that. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Grass. Ms. Williams? Do it, tell it to the board at the podium.
My name's Esther Williams, 137 Upper Patagansett Road. Some of you know me, some of you don't. My picture's on the wall. I was your, I was your town clerk. I was in the office 45 years. I love this town. I grew up in the house across the street my father built it the year I was born, 19... My father was a little Sicilian guy. He was here 60 years cutting the hair of people in this town. He used to come home at night with some stories, and he'd say, "I had a guy in the chair today. He had a cleaner face but a dirty neck." "This police station has a clean face, it's got a real dirty neck. It's got to be cleaned up, shaved off, whatever they have to do, it's got to be fixed, and the sooner the better, and I hope you'll vote for it." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir.
My name is John Bialowans Jr. of 61 Walnut Hill Road, Eastline, Connecticut. Everybody's going around the whole subject that my letter pertains to with the purchase of this building and the conditions of the roof and everything. So, I think that it's probably a good time to say it now at this special meeting. What you call it. My concerns and the mess the taxpayers are still having with this ridiculous purchase of the Honeywell Building. Rumors have it that the first selectman held back information, misled taxpayers, that the O-line police force was going to join forces with our police force for a great location and condition of this building. Why has no independent inspection of this building, water system, roof conditions ever done to purchase the building, and other things that will probably pop up after they keep going building this building? Why was there no three proposals for work to be done before purchasing this building or do any work, or any, for any work after that? Even after being approved for $7.5 million, the taxpayers of Eastline will still have another referendum for more money to finish this public safety building. I really feel sorry for the police department for the conditions, the lies that they endured, listened to from the first selectman, as rumor has it, and it's amazing how there was no lawsuits from their union, never happened. That alone sounds fishy. I, you know, I really feel sorry for the policemen that had to work under these conditions for so long and everything else, and there was many things that could have been done probably with that building to save it and everything else. The best, most ridiculous action on this project was to start working on the inside of the building, which is 95% complete by officials, with a damaged, holy roof, and ask for more money now to repair it. This action alone shows how stupid, ridiculous the officials of Eastline were to purchase this building. I thought our leaders of Eastline is to stop lowering taxes for our taxpayers and give the taxpayers straight and truthful answers and to stand behind what they say. I hope the taxpayers can finally see we need a change in local, state, and federal government with fresh blood. Thank you, John Bialowans Jr. P.S., I am repeding rumors, listening to other people talking about this purchase of this old building and everything else that has been promised to this town that has been, have been fallen on deaf ears and everything else. We do need a change. We need our taxes to be lowered and everything. It's a shame that it has to come to this, that, you know, you have to speak for your rights before everybody, and if it falls on deaf ears, that's just another thing that happened with somebody voicing their opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bialowans. Would anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Schultz?
I am not, I want to say that I am in favor of this roof replacement, there's no question about it, but could you, Mr. Moderator, could you determine to find out what is actually warranted on this roof? Is it material only?
Would anyone else like to answer that question?
Bocky, would you like to? As Chairman of the Building Committee?
Or could you?
Sure. Would you like to come out to the podium?
Thank you.
No problem.
Ray O'Connor, 23 Roxbury Court, Chairman of the Eastline Building Committee. The roof is guaranteed against leaks for 20 years, labor and material.
May I ask your question?
Perfect question, or answer, I should say, to my question. But, if we bought, and obviously it will get voted positive tonight, is there any reason why we still could not go to a 30-year roof as opposed to just a 20? Because, I mean, material and labor, that's very significant for a warranty. The only concern I had is maybe the insurance aspect of it. In the event that the manufacturer is guaranteeing or the managing contractors is doing the warranty, is there insurance available that could cover in the event that they should go out of business and not be available to cover their responsibility for the 20 years or 30 years? Could you, and the question to me now is, or to you is, the 30-year availability, could that still be an item that could be considered and completed?
Would anyone like to answer that question? Mr. First Lady?
Some of it aren't gonna happen. Yeah, go ahead. We want to bring up the fact that every roof in town has 20 years on it.
Ray O'Connor again. Every, every, every roof in town has a 20-year warranty on it. I did reach out to the contractor and asked him for a price for a 30-year roof, and he said it would be an ad of $38,000.
Can you repeat that, please?
$38,000 ad for a 30-year roof.
It's not $38,000.
Plus $38.
Thank you. Well, that to me sounds like a pretty good deal, and although the town's roof's for all 20 years, that's fine. Personally, I wanted to get insurance for my house, and my roof is 20 years old, and many insurance companies will not even insure my home unless I replace the roof because it's over 20 years. So, I think $38,000 for a 30-year roof, that's a 10-year gain, is pretty significant. Thank you.
May I ask, Mr. Schultz? Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Again, my name is Bruce Dasinger, 12 Stonecliff Drive, Niantic, Connecticut. Just for the sake of completion and maybe sounding stupid, let me ask the question of drainage. It was, a question was posed at the Board of Finance meeting about drainage, that in the property above that, which is low-income housing, is about 60 units, I believe, is high above, and I don't know where all the water drains from that goes into the proposed project. There is a culvert coming out from the road onto the property that would drain onto the proposed project, and I just, just for the sake of completeness, I'd just like to hear some words of assurance on that, that that's no problem.
May I ask, Mr. First Lady?
Mr. Moderator, to answer the question, a culvert, a culvert was talked about at the Board of Finance meeting on the other property that points toward this building. The other property is top... The other property is topographically much higher, so there's a new project going in, there's a new housing project going in, affordable housing next door. They provided the water lines to the building or up to the property line for us. That conduit, as I discovered in the morning, the next morning, when I just simply asked the question, is part of the design that when they built the road into the new project, they had to build it up. So they've built retaining walls on both sides of this roadway, they built the road into the project. That conduit, that pipe, is for the natural flow of rainwater to flow down the, on the natural land, if you will. It doesn't, the roadway's drainage does not go through there. It's not collecting spill-off from the roads. It is the fact that there's a piece of land on the, if you will, the east side of the road, and because there's been a road, a block, a dam that was put in that acts as a road, there has to be a flow underneath that road of the natural water, and that's what that is. We don't anticipate a lot of water coming through. Even with a 100-year storm, this was all checked out by our engineers and given approvals to that. We're not concerned with it as that land has always been up there, and this building that's always been there has not been affected by the rainwater coming off of that hill during major, major storms. So to bring it up, and thank you for letting me get the chance to clarify that, that there should not be a concern with that conduit.
Thank you, Mr. First Lady. Would anyone else like to be heard?
I'm sorry, I have to come back up again. There was Mike Schultz, Lover's Lane. The one question that I still have is, because it wasn't answered, was through you, Mr. Moderator, does the voting yes on item six negate going for a 30-year roof, or could that still be done? Even though we vote yes to have the roof replaced, could we still go to 30 years?
Thank you, Mike. Tonight's vote is for a 20-year roof. We priced that out based on the new school project, where I think we replaced two of the roofs, just replaced one roof, a 20-year roof, but there's a 20-year roof here that's lasted 30-something years. We, that guarantee goes for 20 years. We typically then treat the roof, and then we get a guarantee for another 10 or 20 years. The question is, the roof tonight is $200,000 for the roof and the contingency that would come up with the project, and it's a 20-year roof. Could we look at a 30-year roof? I will send that back to the Board of Selectmen if they'd like to pick up the other $40,000, go through the Board of Finance, and maybe have another one of these meetings. But we will look into the value of that. We'll actually take direction from the board, the Town Building Committee, whose recommendation to us was a 20-year roof. We'll bring it back to the board of the Town Building Committee. In the meantime, a yes vote tonight gets us going. There is a materials shortage out there, and if we can give an indication to the contractor that, yes, put the order in, we're on our way, we may upgrade the process, may upgrade the process. It's got to go through appropriations, but at least it gets us rolling in the right direction. Good question, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce Walkman. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Are there any other questions or comments?
Can you wait? If anyone has, if you have like 20 seconds, relax, because they get mad at me.
Well, in 20 seconds. In 20 seconds, put your head out the door, please, John.
Well, they're still talking, so. This is just going to be, they're like pulling the silence here.
Mr. Dagel, you want to make comment?
Paul Dagel, Board of Selectmen, 5 Riverhead Lane, East Line. This is probably the, I can't even count the number of times I've had the opportunity to address town boards and agencies and the residents of East Line over this, as Ms. Hiley so adeptly explained, 30-year-old controversial emotional issue. So I just have a couple of comments on some of the statements tonight. One, the, and I apologize, I don't have the exact numbers with me. The numbers are part of the Board of Selectmen meeting and part of the Board of Finance meeting. The budget is not currently $30,000 over budget. That is not a factual statement. There are some outstanding changes that the building committee has not voted on. The most significant one is $42,000 for a commercial vent hood for the stove in the kitchen, which requires a vent out through the roof of the building. That change was caused by a change in the design as determined by the town fire marshal. The original plan called for a standard kitchen stove with a standard kitchen vent hood. It was approved by the previous fire marshal, and it was changed. So that number is not approved, and it will not be approved. There's no money to pay for it as the building committee comes through the rest of the items. So that's it. I apologize, I don't have all the numbers. There's some credits coming. As Mr. Cornelius stated, the current IT project is currently under $10,000 on the budget, but there isn't enough money left if all those outstanding items are disapproved to pay for the roof, and that's why this item is before the town tonight. Secondly, I'd like to identify the $360,000, $62,000 estimate for the roof was not an estimate from a contractor. It was a rough order of magnitude by the design agency. This $171,000 bid from a subcontractor through our general contractor is a hard bid. It was based on that subcontractor inspecting the roof to identify what it was going to cost his company to replace it. And one final comment is the warranty is independently certified and validated by the manufacturer, not by either of the contractors, to validate it's been installed in accordance with their specifications, and then they stand behind the warranty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. First Lady. Would anyone else like to be heard? There are no hands, and we'll wait 20 seconds again.
All those in favor of a resolution to consider and act upon a special appropriation in the amount of $200,000 for the planning, design, acquisition, construction, equipping, and furnishing the public safety building to specifically include roof replacement, the source of funding being American Rescue Plan funding, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
I rule the ayes carry. Resolution carries.
We gotta wait for the outside to check the log.
Okay, the ayes carry. Resolution carries. There are no other items in the agenda, I'll adjutant a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Mr. Siri. Mr. First, Mr. First Lady, Mr. Nixon. All those in favor of a full adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Immediate adjournment.